New contacts. The club is sponsored and hosted by Azet's accountants, Caxton Charter Surveyors and Gullens Solicitors. And we all hope you've weathered the storm that was the Covid pandemic. And I'm looking forward to the relaxation of the restrictions we've been living with for on and off for more than a year. So we're delighted to welcome our keynote speaker today, Roger Gough, leader of Kent County Council. I'm very grateful that he's made time in his busy schedule. We also welcome speakers from each of our sponsors. You're welcome to take notes, of course, but you will be sent a recording of today's events should you want to check on something or share it with colleagues. So without further ado, can I introduce our first speaker, Graham Mitchell of Caxton Charter Affairs, who will give us an update on property matters. Graham?
Is Graham on mute? Sorry, I was automatically muted. Apologize. Good morning, everyone. I'll start again. As Mandy's already said, my name's Graham Mitchell and I'm one of the founding directors of Caxtons. And for those of you that don't know, Caxtons is a firm of chartered surveyors and property managers, managing about 10,000 properties in Kent and the South East generally. Whilst I'm a chartered surveyor by profession, my main role within Caxtons is as finance director, running the business on a day-to-day basis. This morning, I've been asked to provide you with a general overview of the property market at the present time. Quite a tall order in just 10 minutes. The last few months have been the most disruptive and uncertain in living memory for businesses in most sectors, due both to the effects of Covid-19, coupled with the continuing uncertainties surrounding Brexit, which continued right up until the end of last year and arguably still continue. Whilst as business, as a business, Caxtons has fared far better than expected over the last 11 or 12 months, largely due to the spread and diversity of our business and the actions we took in the early days of the pandemic. The performance of the property market as a whole has been extremely mixed. The industrial market has gone from strength to strength in recent months, with the take-up being at an all-time high in almost all size ranges. Internet-related retailers such as Amazon continue to lead the charge for larger sheds, with prelets being agreed throughout the county on units from 100,000 square feet to half a million square feet. Where retailers have been dropping off within town centres due to closures during lockdown, some retailers, such as Argos, are now looking for fulfilment centres to accommodate the parcel delivery. The office market's been far more dead and it's been fairly dead for some time throughout the size range. And I suspect that the subdued market will continue for some time to come. There's been much speculation about the future of the office market due to the rise in home working and in many companies looking to downsize. Some commentators have even suggested the demise of the office as we know it. Although I've no doubt that the future will be different, I'm sure that the predicted demise of the office is premature. At one end of the spectrum, there are high-profile companies such as HSBC, saying that it will be reducing its office footprint by over 40%, although this will be over many years due to the long-term leases that they have in many cases. At the other end of the spectrum, there are companies that are saying that not only will they be returning staff to their offices as soon as it's safe to do so, but due to the sense of continuing social distancing, they will actually require more space to accommodate the same number of people in the future. In my view, the likely future for perhaps the majority of office-based businesses will be a hybrid model, whereby staff work in the office for two to three days a week and from home, or perhaps a small office close to home, for the rest of the week. For some companies, this may well mean a reduction in their office footprint. But for others, particularly those based in large cities, it might mean a reduction in their city centre space, but that this will be replaced by an increase in demand for smaller, flexible office accommodation in the provinces. I suspect that in due course, service office providers will benefit from this change, albeit in general, they have been suffering in recent months, as have so many other businesses. Indeed, I understand that Locating Kent have received a number of inquiries from London-based companies for small or flexible office space as a result of the move to home working. The one thing that I am certain is that it will be probably at least a year or so until things settle down into a new normal and we see how office demand actually changes. It doesn't need me to tell you that the retail market has been the sector, along with hospitality and leisure, which has probably been affected the most by the pandemic and associated lockdowns. Prior to Covid, many retailers were already suffering. And the shift from the traditional high streets to online trading has been taking place for a number of years. However, the last year has just accelerated this trend and condensed what would probably have happened in any event over the next decade or so into just one year. A number of retailers will no doubt not be open as the lockdown eases. Indeed, John Lewis has announced in the last few days that this will apply to a number of their stores. And Thornton's have announced that none of their shops will be reopening. This trend will in turn result in short to medium-term damage to many high streets as we know them. However, they will evolve in time and recover, albeit no doubt with more residential and leisure uses replacing some of the traditional retail ones. At the smaller end of the market, we at Caxtons have found that demand has been reasonably good for secondary units in local parades. And I suggest, and I suspect, shall I say, that this will continue. One last point that I'd make in relation to retail and which doesn't feature heavily in the national media is the damage to retail investments, both in terms of downward pressure on capital values, but more immediately on lower rent levels being collected. Pension funds and more recently, local authorities have invested heavily in property investments. And the damage to retail portfolios will therefore indirectly affect us all. Whilst I don't purport to be an expert in the hospitality and leisure sectors, I don't need to tell you how badly these sectors have been hit. At Caxtons, we have direct experience of this with the levels of unpaid rents in the properties we manage, particularly within the retail, hospitality and leisure sectors, being well over 10 times greater than we'd usually experience. Some of these areas have payment plans agreed. Others will no doubt write off some of their rent debt by going through pre-package arrangements. In other cases, companies will just go under and the rears will never be collected. And hopefully, in some cases, the rears will finally be settled. However, as in any downturn, there are opportunities. Currently, there are a number of companies in the market that are actively looking to buy chains of pubs and hotels in particular, as they anticipate being able to acquire struggling businesses at fairly low prices, but expect the sector to bounce back quite quickly when the current restrictions end. In recent months, the residential market has been very strong, with a healthy growth in values, particularly for houses in suburban and rural areas. The strong levels of demand were initially fuelled by the growth in people wishing to leave city centres, where infection rates were particularly high. And this trend was further fuelled by the Chancellor's introduction of the stamp duty holiday on values up to £500,000. Overall, price rises on a UK-wide basis peaked at around 6% to 7% at the end of last year, albeit there were significant regional variations and with values of some properties in London falling over the same period. Demand and house price growth fell sharply in January and February in anticipation of the stamp duty holiday ending on the 31st of March. However, a second mini-boom started pretty much straight away after the budget when stamp duty concessions were extended. The residential lettings market has also been strong over recent months, with vacant properties often being let as soon as they are placed on the market. The pent-up demand, coupled with a shortage of stock, has led to an increase in rental values in many areas. So what does the future hold for the residential market? Frankly, I've no idea. Whilst the residential market is likely to remain buoyant over the coming months, I suspect that it will run out of steam to some degree two to three months before the stamp duty concessions end. Prior to the extension of these concessions, market predictions were all over the place. Some commentators were predicting an increase in house prices in 2021 of around 2% to 3%, whereas others were suggesting a fall of up to 6% to 7%. No doubt, the ongoing savings tax in the short term will continue to fuel price rises throughout 2021. And recent reports are now predicting house price growth this year might be up to 5% to 6%. Only time will tell. However, the immediate future beyond the stamp duty holiday is far more uncertain. I'm afraid my comments this morning have been rather superficial and broad-brush, both due to time constraints and market uncertainties. However, my colleagues and I would be pleased to discuss this further with anyone on a one-to-one basis in the future. I'll now pass you back to Mandy.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Graham. I'll have plenty of food for thought. I'd now like to introduce our keynote speaker, Roger Gough, who's had the unenviable job of leading Kent County Council during the global pandemic. Roger became leader of KCC in October 2019, having first as a member for Darrent Valley, which is now Seven Oaks North and Darrent Valley since 2005. He was previously the Cabinet Member for Children, Young People and Education and has held other cabinet roles since 2006. Roger has a strong record of national politics through work for think tanks such as the Policy Exchange and Localis. Before entering government, local government, he worked in investment banking for 16 years. Roger is going to talk about Kent after Covid. After that, there will be a short Q&amp;A session chaired by John Roberts of Gullens. Please pose your questions using the chat function. So over to you, Roger.
Thank you very much, Mandy. And I know, Molly, you're overseeing the slides, so thank you very much for that. Good morning, everyone. Thank you very much for inviting me. Graham said that he'd been, he thought he'd been a little superficial. Well, now you've got a politician talking about this, so we'll see how we manage. But I will try in this just to talk a little bit about what the Covid experience and impact in Kent has been and then also some straws in the wind as to where things may be going from here. So if we just move on quickly to the first main slide, that's certainly for any of us who've been involved in managing the Covid crisis and worked with the Director of Public Health, Andrew Scott Clark, this kind of chart is pretty familiar. And it does describe really the life of the last few months. So as you'll recall, prior to the autumn, prior to about the middle to latter part of October, Kent was actually below the national average, hence the red line in the slide as you see in front of you, was below national average, below South East average actually in terms of infections. And therefore, in a relatively good place. And of course, all that changed and changed quite dramatically. And it's fair to say that for those of us who lived through it, those stages where you see the chart, the red line that's surging upwards, were very, very concerning because we could not work out why. Of course, subsequent to that, the Kent variant, it has unfortunately become known, was revealed, if you like, through investigation of exactly this phenomenon as to what was happening in Kent and why it was why it was increasing at a time when we already had a significant level of restriction and it was hard to see why that should be. Since the new year, again, quite a dramatic shift in the picture. I think we're now down to about 36 was the last figure I saw, 36 cases per 100,000 over seven days. The peak, as you can see, was nearly 900. So that gives you an idea of the scale of the decline we've seen and actually now back well below national average. We clearly had a big drive on things like symptom-free testing, which we rolled out across the county, and the wider pattern of restrictions has taken effect. So that's, and of course, we'll come back to a little bit later, was that the high point, of course, is when the two things that many of us were worried about, Covid and Brexit transition, came together in the pretty spectacular days in the run-up to Christmas. So if we move on to some of the economic effects and anybody who's seen any of my talks on this will probably be quite familiar with this slide. But what it shows is on the one side, the impact of the projected decline in one or two cases, slight increase, but by and large, decline in GVA over the last year and a bit. And then the horizontal axis gives you the degree to which Kent is relatively orientated or Kent and Midway is relatively orientated towards those sectors. So construction, particularly as a standout, transport and logistics, also very much on there. And then, as you can see, equally, some big impacts in areas in which Kent is perhaps not as heavily represented as you might think, but it's nonetheless a significant sector. Areas like accommodation and food, arts, entertainment and leisure. And as you can see, also quite a big impact in areas such as logistics, but logistics perhaps performing somewhat better than some of the other areas. So as you can see, clearly a significant impact across a number of sectors and we'll return to some of those elements in a moment. Moving on to unemployment. As you can see, Kent and Midway has pretty much tracked the national trend on that. In fact, recently, slightly better than national, but this is the claimant count. And clearly, a very big impact again through furlough in containing that. So at each stage, we've seen less unemployment, a significant increase in unemployment, but less than was particularly at the early stages projected. And I think now a combination of furlough being prolonged and equally the prospect now of some sort of recovery post-vaccine has given us some degree of protection against the very worst projections that there were. But nonetheless, a significant effect and one I'll come back to in a moment. So and as you can see also on the next slide, the impact is of course the greatest. In one sense, the greatest at least. I'm going to hedge my position on that slightly. But you see the most profound effects in those most deprived parts of the county, which historically have been tending to have higher levels of unemployment to start with. So you see a whole number of the coastal strip areas in Kent, in areas like the east of the Isle of Sheppes and Thanet down into Dover and Folkestone, but also one or two of the urban areas as well that are less coastal. It is worth saying though, that one of the things you've seen, if you look at things like universal credit claims and the rest, is a very steep rise indeed in the areas which are less affected. So they were coming from such a low base that some of the West Kent areas, you've seen people affected in ways who would normally never have expected to be so, and areas that have seen a steep increase, albeit from a low base, in terms of labour market impacts and in terms of things like universal credit claims. Moving back on the next slide to sectors, perhaps worth drawing out, and I think it fits a little bit with some things that Graham was saying, about the impact of, on the one side, those sectors which have been most profoundly affected. So you see the impact in terms of online job adverts in the catering and hospitality sector. You know, they've dropped away by pretty much half or slightly more than half. Whereas transport, logistics and warehousing, for reasons that we all know, you've actually seen a significant increase in those job adverts. And clearly, that's, as the slide I showed a moment ago indicates, a very significant sector for Kent and will continue, I think, to be so. On the next slide, we see some of the scenarios from the Office of Budget Responsibility. Probably fair to say that now the downside scenarios are, for the reasons I was mentioning earlier on, looking less likely. In all cases, clearly something of a spike in the short run, but nonetheless, a recovery. And if you take the central forecast, for example, you start to see that coming through quite significantly in this year. More perhaps in terms of GDP growth than in terms of employment, which will be a slightly lagging indicator. But nonetheless, a significant move in economic activity through this year with ultimately, but more slowly, and I'll come back to this, an impact on unemployment. These are, by the way, I say these are OBR figures, they're obviously national projections, not Kent. But I do think the some of the evidence we've seen of some of the earlier slide suggested that broadly speaking, there's a reasonable tracking of the national picture here in the county. And to sum it up on the next slide, so as I say, the OBR forecasts have become considerably more positive. And the expectation is that we will be gradually making our way back towards the scale of the economy that we had before the crisis, though we'll only get into that point in the course of 2022. But nonetheless, quite a strong bounce back, some optimism in terms of hospitality, in terms of the springing back of consumption, which clearly is anticipated following the big build-up in some parts of the the population, you've seen that increase in savings. And therefore, someone like Andy Heldane, you know, from the Bank of England has spoken of the economy as like a sort of coiled spring. It'll be interesting to see if that does indeed come through, but most likely there will be at least some quite significant effect. But nonetheless, there will also be a permanent loss of some output. Economy will recover on these projections but remain below the trend that it would have been pre-crisis. And clearly, as we said, labour market will be, if anything, a lagging indicator, particularly as the market unfreezes as furlough and other such measures come to an end. So we will see pressure in that area before we see the kind of improvement that I was indicating in the earlier slide. So that gives a little bit of the overall background as to where we've been. And now perhaps move on on the next slide to some of the questions over where does Kent stand in all this? And a few key points. Well, the first is of course, and it's been a staple, I think, for many of us to focus on over the years, which is the costs and the benefits, if you like, of Kent's strategic position. As historically, of course, the centre of those main strategic routes up from the Channel ports to London. And with London's economy and London's housing market having an enormous knock-on effect on the county. Sometimes that can seem to many people in Kent like a negative. It seems as though we import a number, large parts of London's housing growth, that we import some of the social problems that you see when, for example, we've seen London boroughs placing quite needy residents in parts of Kent. We've seen the issue of looked-after children from London boroughs, particularly in the east of the county. But there is clearly also potentially a very positive economic linkage. And the interesting question is the degree to which that may now be assisted, may now develop positively. As Graham mentioned, and you'll see at the bottom there, a quote from the Kent Property Market Report, which was late last year. Certainly, that was reporting, as Graham mentioned, locating Kent's experience of some quite considerable interest, perhaps no more than that at this stage, but interest in terms of some elements of office accommodation, in terms of some sort of shift from London. And we're certainly seeing that by all accounts, in terms of potential residential moves as well. Clearly, again, Graham touched on, you know, what is the future of the office? And I think most of us will probably work on the basis of something a little like the hybrid model he described. And clearly, for us as the County Council, that's actually a thing that we, something that we have to consider in terms of our own estate, our own operation as quite a large-scale employer, not simply as a local authority viewing the county from a strategic perspective. And we were already pre-crisis, pre-Covid, looking at some quite radical options in terms of our estate and some assumptions about the amount of time that people would spend actually in the office. And clearly, that is something which is likely to accelerate further post or coming out of and following on from the Covid crisis. That, I think, that whole question, and I think it's a big one for us and it's one for the in-tray of whoever leads the council after the May elections, is the interrelationship between the changes in town centres, the changes that we will be making to our own estate, both in terms of the public-facing side, service centres, if you like, on the one side, and our office estate on the other. I'll come, there are some very positive developments in terms of some of the key sectors, which is touched on in the property market report there, and I will come back to that in a moment. But first, let's turn then to the negatives or the concerns. And here's one, which is what happened late last year. It's a moot point as to how material the impact on Kent's external image or how lasting that will be. But there was nonetheless quite a significant impact nonetheless. Headlines that talked about traffic chaos, the slightly jokey thing that I've put up there that came from Twitter late last year when the Kent variant became known. And as I say, the massive disruption that we experienced in the that we experienced in the course of the week or so before Christmas. On that, and perhaps just worth touching at this point, on the impact of Brexit and Brexit transition, a few things to say. The first is that we and our partners in the Kent Resilience Forum, so that's all the major public agencies operating in Kent, including national agencies working with us as well, did undertake, of course, massive preparation for the end of transition on the 31st of December. And I was myself quite preoccupied with the question of what would be the impact of some sort of combined effect from the end of transition and the continuing impact of the pandemic. I have to admit that neither I nor, as far as I know, anyone else foresaw quite the way in which those two things would come together. And so we were scrambling in those days to respond to a crisis that was slightly different, materially different from the one we had planned. It was a total shutdown of the cross-channel, various ways to cross the channel for 48 hours and indeed more. And of course, the whole new element brought into it was the requirement for Covid testing. Overall, the response was rapid. There were some very, very hairy moments. And I think particularly huge strains and stresses seen in the town of Dover. Nonetheless, overall, the response was, as I say, one that ensured we did get to a point of clearing the problems within a matter of a few days. But it was a very, very serious Um but it was a very, very um serious point, uh serious time at that stage in terms of not just uh what was impacting on the drivers, on local communities, as I say, particularly on the town of Dover, but as I indicated earlier, the question of the image uh and external perception of Kent as well. So um that was, that was, and and it's worth saying that, of course, since Christmas, we have seen things a lot quieter. Um uh now, there are many, many reasons for that. One, I think, is that the volumes uh did take a knock in early on. Uh and although overall uh volumes are now back to closer to normal levels, many of those are uh are actually empties. Uh the proportion of empties going through has increased significantly. Um and at the same time, um it one thing which has been positive is that we feared, and many feared, including national government, that the levels of compliance and uh readiness to deal with the new regime on the part of traders and hauliers would be a problem. In practice, we've seen very low levels of turnback um of 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 hauliers who have not got their Kent access permit and the rest of it sorted out. What I think we will see is that we're not out of the woods yet. Um there are, of course, the government has, I think, very wisely moved to stagger the imposition of import controls uh which were due to come in in a big bang in July. Um and that helps. However, it's worth remembering too that uh one of the major centres that was used during the December crisis, Manston, and about six thousand HGVs were put through Manston in the course of a few days uh during that. Manston will no longer be part of the equation um from July onwards. Uh and the quest and the question of how exactly traffic management uh will now work in the course of a crisis, uh because also the traditional operations stack no longer would work as effectively uh with the new border facility at Sevington and the need to uh keep keep that uh operating. Um there are some major questions for us to focus on in terms of how that traffic management is planned uh for the medium term. So if we move on, um uh as I said, the question of the impact of this on Kent's image was one that was clearly of concern. I do think that um Visit Kent, um uh some of whose campaigns you can see there. Um uh Visit Kent has sought to respond very much to this and indeed to the whole COVID crisis uh over the last year. Uh there are a range of campaigns, so over Christmas you saw a big focus on local food production. Um what what one thing which, in fact, I took part in the launch of was the so-called Experience Campaign, which has managed to um get hold of what must be some of the very last bits of available interreg uh money uh from the EU. Um and that is very much focused on um cross-channel shared experiences of how do you promote, for instance, tourism in the off-season? How do you even out uh some of that um that um uh footfall over the course of of a year? Uh and uh and to and tackle some of the issues around seasonality. And there's a wide range of other things that Visit Kent has done to seek to promote Kent again as a destination. And I think that uh is a very positive step and one that uh will seek to offset some of those uh negative impacts I spoke about. Moving on, um at the County Council, we've sought to um uh respond to the crisis. Um we actually had a a plan, the sort of lower of the two pictures there was the sort of strategic plan that we'd set um worked on very hard last year, early part of last year. It was just at the top of the slipway in March, um but then fell away. Um uh had to be sort of shelved as the crisis came in. And then we uh did work on an interim plan for how do we get through in the best possible way for the county the next uh eighteen months. Uh and that seeks to build on what are, I think, some of the most positive elements that we can build for the longer-term future, which I'll turn to in my last uh section of the slides. Um this is um clearly some of the uh areas which I will touch on in a moment. So um uh I've, some of you may have heard of the Employment Task Force, which I chair, which seeks to bring together the um uh a whole range of key players, employers, uh further education, higher education, uh some of the training providers, et cetera, et cetera, to focus on some of the key areas and in particular, how government initiatives such as Kickstart can be turned uh to the advantage uh of Kent and delivered in the best possible way uh in Kent. Um we have, we launched in the middle of the year our Energy and Low Emissions Strategy. And clearly, you can see again the linkage of that to uh some key areas of economic activity, such as the hydrogen development at uh Huron Bay. And some of the other points there I'll turn to in my uh in my slides. So if we move on, um we launched at the same time what was called the Resilience and Renewal Plan. Um I won't go into that in detail. Many of you may well have seen some elements of this before. This was uh last summer. Uh but I particularly draw your attention to um uh the uh channels down at the bottom. Uh and in particular, uh the focus on um uh on on uh supporting uh employment and employment opportunities, particularly with a concern over the scarring impact of the crisis on the uh long-term opportunities of our young people. And that's a big focus of um of the Employment Task Force. And then also what it is that we can build in terms of inv- investment in major sectors, in major projects, which will have a disproportionate impact on the Kent economy. So moving on, the first um element of that is uh what we call uh the Infrastructure Proposition. This is something we've been working on with government uh over a long uh period of, some some period of time, working with government and with our district and borough colleagues and indeed with Medway, which is to look to um take a more integrated approach to planning across the county, to build a more sustained relationship with government and to, on the model of some other counties such as Oxfordshire, uh to seek to accelerate housing delivery in some parts of the county whilst offsetting that or whilst ensuring that uh government investment comes in at an early stage. I apologize for the jargon, by the way, the GIF gap. Uh the GIF is the Growth and Infrastructure Framework, which is something we have worked on over a number of years to uh set out what some of the infrastructure implications uh of growth across the county are. It's a very useful model and it highlights some of the gaps uh in that. I've always made something of a mantra of infrastructure first in terms of uh of growth and development. I think it's very important actually to our communities and to the uh sense of legitimacy that there is when uh when development does take place. Uh and this is very much designed to do that, to accelerate, as I say, delivery in certain parts of the county. You think of things like the Otterpool Development uh down uh near Folkestone. Um and uh and at the same time, as I say, to bring with it government um uh support for front-loading infrastructure wherever possible. If we move on, um one of the uh government, uh major government schemes that came in last year uh was the Getting Building Fund, which was launched at very short notice in June last year. Um and Kenton Midway secured some thirty-seven million pounds from that on a range of uh schemes. You can see them all set out there. I won't go into all the details, but I would point out firstly that there's a number of areas there uh linked to the uh creative sector, which I will uh come back to in a moment. And secondly, also the close proximity of the Thanet Parkway Station, which uh we have been involved with for, again, quite a number of years and which is now very much getting underway, uh and the nearby Discovery Park uh Centre with a major centre there of life sciences, which uh we have seen as strategically very important for the county and particularly uh for the east uh of the county. Um mov- moving on again, the uh next slide then, we've got here what we, what is this Strength in Places uh fund, which is from UK Research and Innovation. Again, we've been successful in attracting investment um there. While on the right-hand side, again, Discovery Park, particularly with a focus on advanced digital technologies in terms of medicines, manufacturing. Um and on the left, um East Malling Research, NIAB, E M R, uh and uh their work on advanced technology for developing um uh climate-smart uh food production and actually more generally digitally advanced and technologically advanced uh food uh horticulture sector within the county and um an area such as horticulture. After all, at the very root of our concept of being the Garden of England is, I think, a sector which is in many ways looking to reinvent it, or reinvent is an exaggeration, but to take that uh next step up uh in terms of its uh its production approach. Uh and this is an important part of of delivering that. Um the Life Sciences theme addressed in our next uh slide. Uh again, major developments, a number of which we've secured uh funding uh for, so particularly the Kenton Midway Medical School uh now very much uh coming forward, linking um our universities and uh health provision. Um I've spoken already about Discovery Park, um the Kent Science Park. Um and underlying that equally, that point about close connection uh to London. Uh so the ability both to um ensure some real strength in a key sector uh and to benefit from those close links to London uh in in doing so. On the next slide, we have the uh the other sector, which I think was highlighted in that Kent Property Market Report, um the creative sector. So one strong example, it's not the only one, is the Newtown Works um in Ashford. That's something like a two-hundred-and-fifty-million-pound project, uh ultimately generating around two thousand jobs with a particular focus on TV and film production, TV and Film Production Centre, but many other elements to uh the development too. And it's worth remembering that if we look at the creative sector, we have the the Thames Estuary Growth Board, in which I sit, uh puts a uh big focus on the uh creative corridor coming out of London and highlighting all those opportunities, many of them across the North Kent coast, but not only there, also in other parts of the county, uh such as Tunbridge Wells. Uh and this is an area where, particularly if you look at the coast, but not only that, we are actually seeing some quite significant growth uh for the county. So this is, these are some of the areas that we believe can deliver uh for the future. Um moving on, um this is the Ebbsfleet Club, so it wouldn't be uh uh appropriate not to uh uh we've mentioned Ebbsfleet. So I did invite me Simon Dudley, uh the chairman uh of the Ebbsfleet Development Corporation last week, uh clearly seeing an acceleration in development there and some quite ambitious plans. The interesting question, of course, will be the linkage between that and the London Resort. Uh again, a project which um has started over the last year, eighteen months to uh stir into life after a long, long period of dormancy. There are some real challenges as to how that develops, in particular, uh its relationship to um uh particularly many of the uh traffic and transport issues in and around uh Ebbsfleet. But nonetheless, it has significant potential and is now uh starting to move forward uh as indeed, as I say, Ebbsfleet itself has done so. And finally, um we will recall that late uh that in recent months, government has put a lot of emphasis on free ports. Uh Dover Harbour Board, and we worked with them very, very closely, initially uh considered a uh free port application under the uh round that was launched um earlier in the uh uh that was launched uh some some months ago. However, um I think it became clear over time that the kind of model that uh government was looking for was very much an old-fashioned, well, old-fashioned is the wrong word, but a very typical model of a free port. Dover is not really set up for that, and in many ways uh the Harbour Board was looking to linkages across the country uh from uh from Dover, which after all serves as the main uh conduit for uh European trade in particular. Um was looking for that rather uh rather than, if you like, a traditional free port uh that was bounded in by a fence right on the site uh there. And so they did switch uh their focus to a very different proposition, the so-called smart strait. So it's returning to the idea of smart borders of the most efficient way in which you can deliver uh the deliver border um uh checks and uh the whole process is associated with that. It is being developed both by Dover Harbour Board and by Eurotunnel, working together. We are certainly involved with that, and I think it is again something that has, over time, quite significant potential, but uh clearly at an earlier stage at the moment. So to conclude, I think we have seen um, as I say, a significant impact on Kent, not just from COVID, uh but from its interaction with Brexit. Uh we are uh nonetheless, as I say, seeing some opportunities, in particular, coming out of the relationship with London uh from the County Council's point of view and those others, other partners with whom we work. I think a big focus on trying to mitigate some of the uh labour market impacts in particular uh and a focus on some key sectors uh in which I do believe we started to see some progress. So I'll leave it there and uh be very happy to take any questions.
Roger, thank you, thank you very much. Sir John Roberts here, uh just dealing questions and answers. Um Roger, first of all, thank you very much for taking the time today. A fascinating uh period for Kent, given its location um with uh with Brexit in particular. Um I've had a a few questions uh come up whilst you've been speaking, and you've spoken about infrastructure, of course. The first question that came through from Stephen Boxall was um about Crossrail uh and the rumours about whether or not it was being extended to uh to Ebbsfleet. I don't know if you can shine any light on that.
Yes, yeah, yes, I can, actually. It's um uh two things to say. One is that I think almost at the moment I became leader or my, in fact, I think when I was my sort of election was was announced, uh an email pinged into my inbox um from the leader of Bexley uh talking about C two E, which at that moment, I must confess, I knew nothing about. Uh so I think Crossrail to Ebbsfleet um was on my radar right from the start. It is, it's um at the moment, we're at the stage, in fact, I'm, we've got a meeting of the uh authorities involved in that tomorrow. Um and there's a lot of work being done with the Department for Transport, looking at a range of options. So um there's, there is, and the D F T has always been, I'm afraid, rather insistent on this, the low-cost options, which means that you don't get a direct rail link, uh but you you have a series of rapid transit buses and so on to link up. And then there are others which involve use of um different, different tracks, uh either segregated or part of the uh overall system uh to um uh to to achieve that. So there are, I think, three or four options on the table at the moment. Um I think it will still be quite a tough sell, because I think there are two things. One is the linkage into Crossrail itself. I think uh Transport for London is very, very focused on the idea simply that Crossrail gets delivered. Um and uh is nervous of anything that might, if you like, contaminate uh its network. Uh and secondly, there with the question of cost uh and how that is to be met. But at the moment, it's still being progressed. We are, of course, very keen on it. So I think it's uh still still very much a live um uh a live prospect, but uh one which is going through a series of stages. And um uh there's been some quite detailed work being done. And I'll say the next sort of checkpoint on that will be tomorrow.
Excellent, a very thorough answer. Um uh and uh I I think it's also probably linked in with the the whole development in uh around uh Ebbsfleet. And um again, London Resort you've touched on. Uh and people have been asking whether or not this designation of as an S S S I is likely to have any impact. I don't know if you have any uh inside knowledge on on that.
Well, only as you say, it's been notified that uh this is being uh examined by Natural England. And um uh that is, it is a factor. I mean, it's fair to say we ourselves are responding to uh the D C O and clearly the environmental concerns about it are quite considerable. Now, I think our view, our starting point view is that there are ways in which the whole thing can be uh managed, that it can be um that you can have coexistence of areas which are certainly uh at the very, even even if if it doesn't become full S S S I, certainly of significant um environmental interest and importance with what will be part of that area uh used for for that site. Um and so for us, in our approach to it, I think the two big concerns we have is, yes, the environmental one and the and the um and some of the transport implications as well. What exactly Natural England's intentions are, I don't know, but it's fair to say Natural England is a a body which will take its responsibilities, shall we say, seriously, and is not too deterred by the impact this can have on um uh on development. Uh we've seen that for anyone who's followed the whole so-called Stodmarsh affair. Um we've seen again Natural England very much uh stepping in there and uh taking a strong view, which has had had an impact on on development. So uh I don't think we could, anyone who would um uh expect them to play easy with this because it's a significant development. I think they'll take their, what they see as their responsibilities very, very seriously.
Um I just had a, actually, a couple of questions about employment in in Kent as well. Um one that's just come in about shortage of seasonal workers, Kent. Um and another, I've come from the other uh angle, uh and that is the impact of uh flexible working, perhaps making um London less of a burden, if you like, for the for the commutes and therefore making it less attractive for people to move out to Kent. Um uh coming from perhaps two totally different uh angles there, but challenges for uh employment and recruitment in Kent, if you have any thoughts.
Yes, absolutely. The um uh of the seasonal workers, it's interesting, and I meant, I mentioned horticulture as a sector. And they certainly are being very, very proactive in responding to that. Um uh so there is a focus on trying to, on recognizing firstly that uh you know, there is a huge impact from that uh decline in seasonal workers. There is um some effort, clearly the exact scale of that reduction depends on the stance government takes in relation to uh to the various schemes. Um so there's a lobbying element still on that to be pursued. But also then trying to look at uh ways in which you re redefine the careers um that there are within that sector uh to make the, make make it a much more attractive proposition. So the the sector there is trying very much to help itself, and uh there's actually a very dynamic group of people within that sector uh trying to address the problem, and it's something which, in fact, we've had reported back to the Employment Task Force. So uh yes, there is a potential significant impact, but I think the uh the industry is trying very much to uh respond to it in quite a creative way. What was the second question?
Well, the second question really was that uh people who may have been attracted to Kent to get away from London and all the commute was required. Of course, now with the advent of much more flexible working, may be less inclined to look to Kent uh as an alternative to London, and so that may uh impact on the ability to recruit uh people in Kent uh away from London.
Yes, I mean, I I'm not, I'm not sure that's how it plays out. I mean, clearly, it's still a bit speculative at the moment, but equally, going back to what Graham mentioned, um the prospect of uh uh satellite, smaller offices and the rest outside London may well play to our advantage and um equally the scope to live somewhere here, somewhere like here without that constant commute. Um and you know, some of the work being done more remotely may actually enhance the um attractions. I think certainly, my understanding is the latter effect insofar as you can uh see anything uh very definite on it has been the bigger one. But uh I think we're all of us, probably, and I think Graham touched on this in his remarks, we're all of us still dealing a little bit with um uh things which are at a very early stage in terms of their trend, and it's all a little bit tentative. Uh but Graham referred to it, and I did in my remarks too, the locate in Kent experience of interest in terms of um uh of of where of certainly some offices would be placed, um which is quite positive for Kent in terms of its benefit vis a vis London.
Hmm. In terms of the the more traditional employment black spots in Kent, we've highlighted in one of your slides. Um what 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 thoughts and plans are there to try and overcome uh those?
I think they are, I I think firstly, it is very much a case of what can you uh deliver in terms of the overall economic environment in that part of the county, and it and it's, it's not solely an East Kent phenomenon, but uh it is yeah, to portray Kent as sort of London hinterland and coastal periphery is too simplistic, but it's not a bad approximation. Um then clearly you have um and a bit, you know, clearly the scale in which you can generate opportunities. And that's where some of the stuff I was talking about in terms of the Dover Harbour Board Initiative may well be a good case in point. Um that's why I've always given great importance to um uh areas such as Discovery Park, because again, that's not right in the heart of the uh unemployment um black spots, but it's actually within a relatively prosperous part of Dover District, but it's still right on the Dover Thannet border. And the ability to generate high value jobs uh in a part of the world that is um uh doesn't have a huge uh strength in that is is important. And then the clusters, particularly uh around creative. Um if you see what's been done over the years in Folkestone, that's made a huge difference in there, and then and indeed in 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 Margate too. So I think there are spin offs that you can get from that. Now, I think you always end with a problem, which is you're partly about regenerating areas and you're partly about regenerating people. Um so you can get those benefits from uh, you know, additional areas of growth. But do they feed through to the most deprived people in uh relatively depressed areas? Um and that's where I think some of the other work that you do in the labour market side. Um and actually taking a quite realistic approach, and this is something which I think has come through from some of the work on Kickstarter as to what is a sensible, logical gradation for people uh coming from a relatively low skill base, what can you do to gradually upskill that? Um I think that's one of the big challenges, but it is something that we're quite uh quite focused on. So I think it is you can get, I think, and I think there are some quite bright signs of that in terms of economic activity in different parts of the county that certainly will sort of raise the overall tide. But then I think you've got to have some very specific interventions for those people who uh may well miss it anyway, unless you do that.
Um, thank you. I've just had one question come in from Carl Elliott. Um perhaps if I just sort of read it out, it's probably easiest. Um you've made mention of the Stodmarsh and Natural England's robust stance on the level of nitrates and phosphates entering the Stodmarsh and Stour Valley. At present, significant brownfield development uh opportunities are uh stalled in central Canterbury uh uh due to no solutions to the issue coming forward. What, if anything, are KCC doing to assist in unlocking this uh matter? As local authorities are struggling to find a way around the issue.
Yeah, we we are making, I think, some progress on that. We have been, I mean, we've been involved in it right from the start, and indeed, I uh when the issue blew up in a big way. When was it? About October last year? Uh certainly, I I I I raised, sought to raise it with government, both DEFRA and MHCLG, uh along with the leader of Canterbury at that point. There's been some very good work undertaken by the Kent and Midway Economic Partnership in looking at ways through this. Um and it's, you know, we're not quite there yet, but I think we are actually starting to make a little bit of progress in in addressing the issue. So uh um that, so so yes, I think there is some progress on it, and uh I think it is something we're giving, as I said, quite a lot of attention to.
Hmm. Okay, I think probably one more question uh looking at the time, Roger, and that is a quick update on the London Thames Crossing. Um and where we are.
Yes, I'm 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 no, it's all right. Yeah, no, I was I was with you. I was with you. Um I was about to uh sort of, I'm I'm not going to unmask myself there. It's the news this week. I'm trying to remember what the news this week has been, so uh uh my apologies if I'm a little unclear on.
I'm I'm behind time on that as well, so I don't know if uh whoever asked question, um John Gurney.
John.
elaborate. Um and says withdrawal of that.
This was.
Withdrawal of the application.
Right, um okay, I'm, I must apologize, I'm slightly taken back on, back on that one, but um uh certainly they have been already, um I don't recall something this week, but certainly there was uh a a a step back on the DCO, partly because they were challenged um by by government on a number of uh uh of issues. Um and and I remember that came as a bit of a shock to us because we'd actually met them uh prior to um uh uh prior to that, just a few days prior to uh to that announcement. Uh otherwise, I mean, our our focus on the Lower Thames Crossing throughout has been on um, I think, two areas. One has been mitigation of some of the effects uh on which we've again had some success. So there was a quite significant, uh I mean, go way, way back, it was the nature of the route. Uh but then subsequent to that, the um uh the journey, the um uh there there were some changes to the route linked or to the road uh linked to utility uh requirements, which had sort of really quite shocking environmental impacts. Um and that has been much improved as a result of our engagement on that. The second element, which I think remains a huge concern, but which certainly in the last set of conversations I've had with them was very um uh was again somewhat more positively indicated, is the impact on local roads. Uh so we have a huge concern that if you look at particularly a number of the roads that link uh the M two, A two, M two and the M twenty, uh that the impact on those uh potentially could be very, very significant indeed. Um and apart from, I think, some commitment on Bluebell Hill, early on, there was very, very little uh sense uh of the of how that was going to be addressed. Now, the current leadership there on that have been a bit more responsive, and I think have started to recognize that that's an issue that they can't entirely step away from. So but clearly, it's it's equally the case that they were indicating to us very strongly that the timeline was moving back, certainly by a year or two in terms of uh now we're just, yeah, I'm sorry, e- exactly, that's because yeah, thanks to Richard for making that point. I thought the um step back um on um in response to some of the issues uh from the Planning Inspectorate was earlier than this week. I was aware of something similar to that. Oh, gosh. A month or two ago, I'm trying to remember. So uh that's why I was slightly puzzled, but uh but yes, that's I think.
Christmas.
There is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Um and can I just actually go back? There was one point which I think Trevor raised in the chat, which I just thought I ought to address because uh uh where where's it gone? Uh I saw that. Um ongoing relations between Kent and Nordpaderkalle, um something which we have actually put in quite a lot of work. We have a thing called the Straits Committee, which brings together us with not just Nordpaderkalle, but actually the range of um of um uh key players in the northwest of the continent. So it's Nordpaderkalle, it's the Hauts-de-France region, uh it's the provincial authorities in Belgium and the Netherlands, all going up that strip of coast. And there is a particular focus in that on our trading relationships as well as other shared interests such as um uh environmental maritime issues and so on. I think fair to say, it's my own view, is it's quite early days on that, because at the moment, everyone is digesting, I think, the significant change in terms of trade fluidity that there has been since January the first. Um and I don't think that there's going to be any quick way back from that, but it is something that we see as important, and we've been um uh very very much focused on that. And Trevor also asked about migration. Um worth two or three things on that. One is that the um, it's always worth, until Napier Barracks came on board, most migrants arriving on Kent's shores didn't stay in Kent very long. They were part of the National Dispersal Scheme. Now, as National Dispersal um ground to a bit of a halt uh during Covid, um that's when the first use of hotels and then the use of something like Napier came into being, and Napier is still clearly a very troubled situation and one in which we have quite a strong involvement through our public health uh role. The big one that remains for us, of course, is is children, actually young people, I mean, they are children, they are sixteen, seventeen year old males by and large. Um and uh that is something on which we actually have a much better financial position now, thanks to an arrangement we reached with government last year. But we are concerned that as numbers pick up again in, as we go into the spring or the summer, uh we will be um uh we we we, our services could again come under the very severe pressure that they did late last year, which is why we are constantly pressuring government to try and have a more effective dispersal scheme for young people as there is for adults at the moment.
Roger, I can see we didn't give you a big enough time slot um here today. There's clearly a lot uh, a lot that you could speak about quite eloquently, but I I I think we're up against time, Molly, are we not? So um can I just thank you on behalf of everyone from the Ebbsfleet Executive Club for coming along and spending time um today? Uh that's been fascinating, I'm sure everyone will agree. Um thank you again for taking the time.
But thank you, very much appreciated.
Can I just add my thoughts to that and to thank Roger for that, um for those fascinating insights and John for managing our Q and A? Um if you have got further questions for Roger, um or for any of our speakers, you can email them to me if you like, um which is mbean@catson.com, and I will send them to um whoever they're aimed at. Um but thank you again for all that. So now, moving on, our next speaker is Greg Mayne, Director of VAT as Ex Accountants, who is going to talk about post Brexit issues and VAT changes that may impact on businesses. Over to you, Greg.
Thank you, Mandy. Um hopefully I can, actually, I've got my participant screen sharing disabled, so Ma- uh Molly, are you able to?
Okay, sorry.
There we go. Uh let me find the right screen. Hopefully you can see a slide that says VAT and post Brexit update, the gift that keeps on giving. Um the more eagle eyed amongst you would have noticed that I managed to change my name during the presentation, during Roger's presentation, from Canterbury RFC, um which is a previous incumbent to Greg Mayne. Um it could have been worse, I could have appeared as a fluffy kitten. Um so hopefully uh some of you will have spotted that. Uh welcome to this presentation. Um I'm going to whistle through this, and there's quite a few slides to go through, but I hopefully it will hang together quite well for you. Um in terms of the presentation itself, I'm just going to look at some of the terminology changes that have come about since Brexit. Um a little bit about movement of goods, um postponed VAT accounting, which is a good thing. If there's one good thing to come out of all the changes, it's postponed VAT accounting. Some of the changes coming up in the future, and then a little bit on the domestic reverse charge. I've got a mixed audience. So it's not all Brexit, it's not all construction, so I've tried to mash together um some some presentations that will hopefully cover all of this for you. Some of the terminology changes that will come in. Um prior to thirty first December, prior to eleven P M on thirty first December, when you moved goods uh around the EU, they were either supplies or dispatches, which is movements of goods uh from the UK to EU customers, or they were arrivals or acquisitions, which is goods coming back the other way. Um from first to January, those movements of goods are either exports, so anything moving out of the UK is an export, if it's removed from the UK, or an import. Um so purchases and receipts of goods from outside the UK into the UK will be imports. Fundamental changes, changes in the way that those are dealt with as well in terms of administration. The treatment of services, so that's for goods, I was talking about that, services remains broadly unchanged. If people were making supplies of services outside the UK, then they'll they'll effectively stay the same as they were at the moment. I'm going to highlight a quick issue here called the Percy Pig Issue. Sounds a bit flippant, sounds a bit cheesy. For those of you who are not aware of what it is, they they are Percy Pigs, uh very sort of um popular sweets sold by Marks and Spencer's. Um again, it sounds a bit flippant, but it highlights quite a fundamental concern, an issue that I'm coming across on a day daily basis in terms of uh how Brexit has impacted on businesses. Um bit of background, the deal between the uh EU and UK is not a free trade agreement. It's been batched as a free trade agreement. Free trade agreement basically removes all duty charges between trading blocks. Okay, so for the, for example, Canada and the EU, Japan and the EU have free trade agreements. We do not have a free trade agreement. We have a duty preference agreement. We do not have a free trade agreement. We have a duty preference agreement, which allows duty that would be charged on the movement of goods to be suspended if it applies to goods which originate in the UK or EU, which move to the UK or EU. So it can only be applied, that suspension can only be applied if that origin can be confirmed and evidenced. If it can't be confirmed, then import duty applies. So the duty tariff applies. So that's for goods moving from the UK to the EU or vice versa. And just a point to make here, duty charges, unlike VAT, are irrecoverable. They are a direct bottom line cost to a business. So they, and those rates can be quite significant. So they are a cost factor, cost component for a business that's trading in goods between the UK and EU. So for goods that originate in the EU that are entered into the UK, there is no duty. The duty is suspended to nil based on that, that origin evidence being obtained. If those same goods go back the other way, there is a duty charge. So the issue here with Percy Pigs, a bit of background for you, Percy Pig Suites are manufactured in Germany. So they originate in the EU. Marks and Spencer's buy them in or bought them in. So that movement from the EU into the UK, the duty charge was suspended to nil. Marks and Spencer's, as you're aware, have got stores in the Republic of Ireland and also in France. And at the time of speaking, the Republic of Ireland is still in the EU. So those goods went from EU into the UK, so Germany into the UK, no duty charged on them. Then when they were moved back to the EU into Ireland or into France, there's a duty charge because they have not originated in the UK. They originated in Germany. Germany to UK, UK back into the EU, duty charge. And that wasn't factored in by Marks and Spencer's. Again, it sounds kind of flippant and a bit niche, but I am dealing daily with businesses that buy from manufacturers, suppliers in the EU, so no duty charged. And they then redisperse those goods to customers around the EU where duty is charged. And that cost hasn't been factored in in terms of sales price. So it's something to be borne in mind. Anybody who's trading in the same goods, bringing the goods in and then dispersing them back out, it could be a duty issue which can be an absolute cost. I mentioned about one of the good things that's come out of this postponed VAT accounting, which was referred to as the Dutch method, which is nowhere near as exciting as that sounds. The Dutch have been using this particular way of treating import VAT since 1968. And we're never really, can never really understand why the rest of the EU didn't follow suit. But from the 1st of January, most of the EU now applies this postponed VAT accounting, including the UK, which implemented this, this measure. The old system, which still, if you don't have postponed VAT accounting in place, if businesses don't use postponed VAT accounting, this is the way that the method works at the moment. Goods arrive in the UK. Freight agent or customs agent will key in that import entry. They'll key in the documentation that shows what is being imported and where from and the values of those goods coming in. Any import charges are paid or deferred by the import agent. So they will either pay over the import duty in VAT or they will defer it, but it's paid at the point of importation. The freight agent then sends their bill to the customer and says, thank you for, you know, using my services. Here's a bill for what I've done for you and a bill for the import VAT and import duty that I've paid on your behalf, plus a commission charge. So they will bill for that, the work they've done, plus the money effectively they've lent to the business to pay that, that import VAT. And then sometime later, usually about a month or so later, a C79 certificate comes out. So the business receives something in the post, second class post from HMRC. So make sure the address is right and so on. They will see this certificate which says effectively, you can now recover this input VAT. The VAT that you paid at importation is now recoverable. So there's a time lag from the point of importation to receiving this, hopefully if the postman delivers it, receiving the document that allows you to recover the input VAT. And the PVA system, the new system, which is a preferable system. Goods arrive, the import entry is keyed in by the customs agent, all the same, exactly the same as the old system so far. Import duty will be paid if there is duty applicable. So the agent will pay over that import duty or defer it. Then they'll send, send their bill for their services plus the duty they may have paid on your behalf, the business behalf. But the VAT return for the period that the importation took place is where the reporting of that import VAT takes place. It all takes place on the VAT return. Output tax is declared for the, for the import that value and input tax. So there is no payment to HMRC of any import VAT. It's all done on the VAT return. Shown as output tax and then recovered as input tax, nil net cost to the business. So it's a preferable system. It's easier to use. It's all online, all electronic, not relying on the post or anything. So it's a much better system. So we are urging businesses to, to make sure that they're using this system at the moment. Some of the future changes which are coming out as a result of Brexit, we're looking at a one-stop shop for businesses that sell B to C into the EU where they sell small value goods. At the moment, if you sell anything to any customer in the EU, in any country, you have to register for VAT. Specifically if those goods cost less than 150 euros, 135 pounds, you must register. So theoretically, if they register in every single EU member state. At the moment, 1st of July, I'll put an asterisk, asterisk there, I'll come back to that in a second. From the 1st of July, a one-stop shop will come into play, which will allow one registration in one member state. And that will then cover all of the sales for the whole of the EU. But at the moment, businesses have to register in every single member state. So I'm dealing with businesses that do this kind of sale and they are effectively saying, I'm not going to bother. I'm going to stop selling to the EU until this settles down. It's too costly and too burdensome. The EU VAT recovery mechanism, we've moved from being within the EU to outside the EU. There are two different ways of recovering VAT on things like hotel expenditure, conference costs, taxi fares, those kind of things. We're moving to the non-EU mechanism, which is a clumsy paper-based system. The EU system was all online, much simpler. So we're moving to a different, different way of doing it and a different timescale as well. I can provide more details. If anybody is, not that we're going anywhere at the moment, but if you are going to attend a conference in Milan at some time or Mipim, is it down in Cannes or Nice? Those sort of costs, you can recover the VAT on those costs, but there's a different way of doing it. So I can provide more details if need be. Picking up on something Roger mentioned earlier, we're now in the, we're in a three-stage border operating model for the implementation of duty changes. We're currently in stage one, which theoretically at least is the easiest stage. I'm not sure that that's been borne out by the amount of work I've been doing over the last four months, but we are in the easy stage. Stage two comes in on the 1st of April, which will apply mostly to checks on food products. This has already been kicked down the road by Michael Gove. He's made an arbitrary decision to, to delay that implementation. And I pick up again on Roger's point about extending these changes from the 1st of July, this is all controls apply. We are as normal from the 1st of July. But again, that's been deferred. Now, I'd agree with Roger, it's a, it's a good thing to, to try and delay or defer implementation of checks and administration. But I'll, I'll just remind everybody, we are not in a free trade agreement. We are in a trade and cooperation agreement with the EU. We cannot just decide to make these kind of changes because if the EU, as they have done, have said, you're not allowed to do that, that breaks international law, that cooperate, cooperation element of the agreement will just shatter. We will no longer be in a trade and cooperation agreement and duty will apply to everything. So that's the fallback position. At the moment, this has been deferred. And as I put here, all of these things are open to change, extension, tinkering and argument. So watch this space. This is a move, moving, movable feast at the moment. It's a work in progress, I think is the phrase I want. Changing tack from Brexit, that was Brexit done, whistle-stop tour. The domestic reverse charge has come in. It was mentioned earlier on for the construction industry, particularly those involved in the CIS, where Construction Industry Scheme for Accounting for Tax and so on. This is kind of summed up in one sentence. HMRC introduced this from the 1st of March. It was postponed a couple of times. It should have been introduced a couple of years ago. To, in their words, to tackle a problem, their problem or idea of a problem is there is a hundred million pounds per year of VAT which leaks out of the system. It's a lot of money. I haven't got it, but a hundred million pounds is a lot of money. However, the UK construction sector brings in roughly 110 billion pounds into the exchequer. So that hundred million pound loss is naught point naught nine percent of a, of a problem. So HMRC in their infinite wisdom use their usual way of dealing with these kind of problems, sledgehammer and a walnut. They make a sweeping change to the way that businesses have to deal with all of their VAT within this scheme. The next slide is probably the most important slide. I'll refer anybody to this. This is what I use as my starter when looking at domestic reverse charge. It was produced by HMRC. There's a version here. I don't know if the slides will be available afterwards, but people can use this certainly as a starter for 10, if you like, to see whether they fall within the domestic reverse charge. I won't go through all the detail on that. Again, please come back and ask questions if you have anything specific you need to know. As with any change to VAT laws and so on, there are winners and losers. So for those who are contractors who employ subcontractors under the CIS, they won't have to pay over that VAT to those contractors, subcontractors rather. So they'll be cash flow rich. They don't have to pay it over. They just account for it under the reverse charge. So they account for it and recover it on the same VAT return. But for those subcontractors, they will lose out because they don't get paid that VAT. Theoretically, it's not their money. It's the government's money. They are an unpaid tax collector. They're not allowed to use that money for anything else. In the real world, they do use that money. They, they'll pay for supplies, pay for fuel or those kind of things. There's a short-term cash flow fund coming in from the payment of that VAT. That will go. They won't have access to that funding. So there may be some shortfall when they have to meet their VAT obligations on an ongoing basis. They can move to monthly VAT returns, which will help them to effectively offset some of that VAT loss. That was a really whistle-stop tour. There's my contact details. I have to show a quick disclaimer at the end of this, but hopefully that's useful for all of you and I can perhaps hand you back now.
Well, thank you very much, Greg. Fascinating information. We are running a little bit short of time now. But I'm pleased to introduce John Roberts, Managing Partner of Gullens, who is going to talk to us about legal basics for a strong future. Over to you, John.
Thank you. Thank you, Mandy. Yes. As, as my slide says, I'm the managing partner at Gullens. We're a multidisciplinary practice and based on, or rather referring to comments earlier on about the High Street, proud to be maintaining a presence in the High Street, both in Maeston and Gravesend. As we're short of time, I'm just going to do a quick run-through legal basics for a business. And there should be a slide, yes, just with, with some headings there that will refer to the basic structure of what I'm going to talk about. So starting with business structure itself. You may be in business as a sole trader, partnership or limited company. But you do need to keep that under review. You may have family members or investors who would like to be more involved or would like to take a step back from business. And now is a good time to plan ahead and think about issues such as protecting family assets and succession, planning for the business. Review these options regularly, including perhaps the use of trusts to hold assets and money for future generations. And where possible, to maximise the opportunities for using tax reliefs that may be available. Alongside that, you may also want to review and update your will regularly to ensure that it reflects your wishes and to ensure the continuation of your business interests. Business partnerships. Also, you may be in partnership with or without an agreement setting out how the business should be run and how the finances should be, be dealt with and how you may withdraw from the business. Ideally, it's important to decide these matters at an early stage. Sometimes partners will, will fall out. And it's important if things go wrong that you have some sort of agreement in place so that you can extract yourself and your finances if the need arose. Contracts, again, important to review those, particularly now as the government is moving towards more green policies, bringing in legally binding targets, particularly for farmers and landowners to help to achieve carbon neutral goals. And with this in mind alongside Brexit, you should review any existing contracts you have in place to identify any risks of non-compliance with them, within them. Also, review future working practices to ensure that they will be compliant or can easily be brought into line with, with new legislation. Where contracts with customers or suppliers increase in value, this equates to an increase in exposure in the event of default by either party. And it's advisable to review all contracts carefully before they're entered into. In particular, considering limitations of liability on either side in light of the implications of a default. Today, much of the business is conducted via the internet and the same consideration applies there. Although sometimes this is forgotten, given the immediacy of the medium. You should be careful to ensure that your terms and conditions apply where required. The contracting party may seek to impose their own provisions and therefore careful drafting will avoid problems. Employment contracts and employment procedures, these should be reviewed regularly as an area of law which trips up businesses of all sizes, especially where procedures are not followed. So before advertising new vacancies, make sure those involved in the recruitment process have an understanding of equal opportunities and draw up a job description and a person specification. And think carefully when writing the advert and ideally use a standard application form. Expansion. You may need investment for your business in the future, perhaps to finance diversification plans. And this could be by way of bank finance or loans from third parties. The lender is likely to seek some additional security. This could be by way of adventure or mortgage or guarantees maybe not be demanded. Implications of security should be considered carefully and documentation reviewed prior to completion. A planned exit, how and when you exit the business should be considered. If you don't plan to hand it on to the next generation, it could be by way of a sale to a third party, management buyout, flotation on stock market or winding up. But the process needs to be managed to protect your interests. You may, for instance, be asked to stay on for a handover period or take deferred consideration depending on the future profits of the business. All such arrangements must be structured to ensure the desired outcome is reached. The buyer will undoubtedly seek assurances to the assets of the business and its liabilities following due diligence, which can be onerous and time-consuming. And it's advisable to seek legal assistance to ensure potential issues identified at an early stage. Whatever your thoughts on, on Brexit, the future will always be brighter for those businesses that plan and are ready to, ready for the next chapter. But as I say, now is the time to ensure that you fully review all aspects of your business. And something that we can of course assist with, should you, should you wish. It's a very much a very whistle-stop tour, given that we are a bit short of time. Our details are, I think, on screen at the moment, but any questions can be raised through our website or to us individually. Mandy, a very much a whistle-stop tour, given the, the time constraints, but hopefully that's given people a bit of a skeleton for reviewing their businesses.
Well, thanks very much, John, and, and thanks for catching us up on our time a little bit. And thank you to all our great speakers today. Plenty of food for thought and thank you for our delegates for joining us. I hope you've enjoyed all our talks and discussions today. Remember, you will receive a recording of the event. And if you have any outstanding questions, you can email me. My email address is on the screen and I will forward them on to the relevant people. We also have a poll about whether people would like to meet face-to-face as the Ipsy Executives Club. If it is allowed, hopefully before summer. Please do participate in the poll. It's just one question. So nice and easy and quick. So it just remains for me to say, to wish you a good day and I look forward to meeting you in person at a future club meeting, hopefully in the next few months. So cheer to you all and have a good day.